initially and then also I would just mention that we have Ellis here for our core strategic team as well.
Jump in if you need to, Alice. All right, Dr. Volz, it's all yours.
Thanks, Sunny. Let me get this started here. I'd also like to thank Dr. Lee and Jody for all the help they did with the course strategic plan and Sunny, you and Jordan were great board participants and everybody who participated on the core strategic team, I think you have a good start on your next, your planning for the next three to five years. As you know, we arrived at a mission, vision and core values and beliefs and then came up with six goals as a result of that. So what I thought I'd do tonight is, is I have a lot of details that I don't have to get into if you don't want me to, so I thought I'd do a brief summary because I think you'll remember the summary items better than if I went through a very long presentation. So first of all, we had very good response rate of 926 responders. Eighty-eight percent of the responders were non-employees, which in my opinion is a good idea of where the community is coming from as far as the various aspects of the school district is in their minds. And of those eighty-eight percent who are non-employed, seventy-seven percent were parents. They see the vast majority of participants were parents. What I was really happy with is that we had over eight hundred responses, written responses to three open-ended questions that we had on the survey. I mean, that's exceptional coming from nine hundred and twenty-six responders. Some people wrote essays in relation to their survey comments that they decided to get, but a vast majority of the comments were positive comments about the school district, the teachers and the role the school district plays in your community. So some big ideas from the survey, I can just put it really one word, it's facilities. The vast majority of responses, especially coming from the written responses on the open-ended questions, were concerning facilities. The second highest amount of respondents were planning for facilities and the third highest was finance for facilities. So you can see via the big ideas that came from the survey, we're really talking about the facility issue in your school district and again, that the community thinks very highly of the school district in their responses. So concerning facilities, fifty-nine percent of the employees mentioned facilities in their open-ended responses and forty-six percent of the non-employees had something to say about facilities. I wanted to get into district finances a little bit in relation to facilities. So Mohammed is a tier-one district for evidence-based funding and to simply put it, that means that Mohammed is one of a few districts in the state of Illinois that are furthest from getting to what the state calls the adequacy target for funding of schools. So Mohammed's at an expenditure, this is a two-year-old budget, at twenty-four million. The state says that Mohammed, based on the characteristics of the school district, the enrollment, the number of special education students, the number of non-low or low-income students is the adequacy target. If you were staffing and had a district that was adequately meeting the needs of the students of the district, it would be thirty-seven million. So you can see the district is thirteen million short or thirty-five percent short of what the state says the adequacy target. Now, to give you an example, there are some districts in this state that are spending three times the adequacy target, where your district is considerably short of even obtaining the adequacy target. Now, what this means as time goes on is the tier-one schools, which Mohammed is, gets the majority, really over ninety percent of the funding that the state does on a yearly basis now, is going to tier-one school districts. But at the same time, of course, your enrollment is increasing, so your ability to have extra money to do things quickly gets eaten up by trying to catch up to the adequacy target and then also providing services for the students that are rolling in your district on a yearly basis. Now, why that is important is because, in my opinion, your district taxpayers are getting a great bang for their buck. So you can look at this in two ways. Your academic scores are high and the costs are low. Now, on the positive side of that, you would think that there's room for adding services, but then some might say, look, you're doing a great job with the services you have, so why do you need more money? And they're showing a little bit, an analysis of your class size and one of the reasons that your spending is relatively low per student is because you don't have classrooms to be able to divide the students into more sections. And that obviously is because you don't have the facility room to add classrooms because you're basically out of classrooms and doing other things like modulators and dividing classrooms in two and things of that nature in order to maximize the space you have. And I'm going to give you some, what I think are very important statistics that potentially could be used for referential purposes in the future. Mohammed's tax rate is the ninth lowest of the thirteen school districts in Champaign County. I think that's a very important statistic. So you're below half in actual overall, your overall tax rate for your school district. And by the way, if anybody wants to ask questions at any time, feel free to do so. Some other facts. So we did more analysis on your district in addition to the survey. So one of the things we did is we look at geographic peers. So we define a geographic peer to be within a thirty-mile radius of Mohammed. It has to be a unit district and it has to have an enrollment over nine hundred and ninety-nine students. And again, your tax rate is twelfth lowest out of nineteen districts when you look at geographic peers. When you look at look-alike peers, so this is delving further into the actual statistics of the school district. So a look-alike peer would be, has to be a unit district with an enrollment two thousand to five thousand students, a per pupil expenditure of fifty-five hundred to seventy-five hundred and a low-income student percentage between ten and thirty percent. And in this, look-alike peers, you're fourth out of five in the general area. But then I wanted to expand that to be more than just in the geographical area. So we expanded it to be look-alike peers in the entire state. So this would be unit districts with enrollment of two thousand to five thousand and you're still below the halfway point, you're twenty-second out of forty school districts in the state for your tax rate. Now, this next statistic is very important. Remember earlier when I talked to you about the percentage of adequacy target? So you're the lowest of all thirteen school districts in Champaign County. In other words, you're furthest away from the adequacy target of any district in Champaign County. So in theory, what you need is you need more classrooms, you need more teachers, and I'm going to show you in a second, you need to lower class size and all of those things would get you closer to the adequacy target. But obviously, it's very difficult to do that when you don't have classroom space. So that goes back to the facility issue, you know, that the survey came out with so strongly from both staff and non-school employees that facilities, planning for facilities and financing for facilities are the most important things we need to do as you go forward. So I want to get into this class size a little bit. So your class size is above the state average for grades two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine and ten. And it's considerably, considerably above the state average for grades two, three, four, five, six, seven and eight. And that's defined to be fifteen percent or more higher than the state average. So that, those are all very important statistics that need to be communicated to the public when we're talking about this facilities issue as we go on. Now, that's like a brief summary of the survey and some financial that I can, I have another twenty slides if you'd like me to go into them or would you like to ask me questions now or what would you like to do?
Yeah, we have a couple of questions, Rich.
I would love to see who you, as you went through those forty-four that were our look-alike peers, could we see those tonight? But I'd love to see what that looks like.
Yeah, we got to that. I have that in, I have that in the presentation here. Just a second. So this is your geographic peers. Can you see this slide?
Yeah.
Yeah, sure can.
Okay, so your geographic peers, you can see that you're again, below half, like I mentioned earlier. You are twelfth out of nineteen. Okay, then we can go to the expanded look-alike and this is really difficult to read, so let me get to the next slide. So this would be throughout the state using, remember those parameters that we put on the expanded look-alike, unit districts with enrollment of two thousand to five thousand. And in this one, you were twenty-second out of forty. For example, in the district where I was superintendent, Ball Chatham, you know, we were, we were just below you. You can see Dunlap's in there, Mattoon, then some of the higher spending ones would be Cremoni, which is up by Kankakee.
Yeah.
You can, you can read through the list yourself.
Yeah, that would be great if you, yeah, so that two seconds helps.
Yeah. Dr. Lee has all of the original slides and then I'm going to send him this presentation I'm doing tonight, so he'll have these additional survey slides.
It would have been one you've already, like, from previous. So it's not this one, actually.
Do you want me to just pull out that specific section?
Rich, when we got, when you got the results back from the community portion of the survey, was there anything to you that kind of jumped out, was kind of surprising?
Well, it could have, but when you look at it from a percentage perspective, you know, I'm going to show you the slide here. Yeah, this is it, I think. Okay, so if you look at this slide, for example, when I saw bullying here, there was seventy-one comments about it, but it's only three point nine percent of the total. Okay, so finances, when you, you know, it's just not finances, it's finances for facilities and it was planning for facilities. See, so those were at four percent, three point five, but you can see facilities itself was at forty-seven point two. In other words, for almost fifty percent of the, of the people who responded to our open-ended questions talked about facilities. Now, staffing becomes an issue because you don't have enough classrooms to lower class size.
Right. And did I understand you right, that the way we get more money from the state is if we have more sections and?
No.
No.
Or the adequacy?
No, you won't get any more money. The, you are going to get the money that the state is funding on a yearly basis, ninety percent of it goes to those tier-one districts. So it is a, I mean, student enrollment is part of the equation, but adding, just adding classrooms by itself doesn't mean anything for that perspective. You won't get more money because you're short so many classrooms. Now, one thing, I don't know if the district's done this yet, but go to the Capital Development Board and get from them how many classrooms you should have based on your student enrollment. But that would be another good statistic to use. So when the state used the funds, offered funds for building of schools, it was based on the number of unhoused students. Okay, they're not doing that anymore. They're not funding the building of schools, but they have the algorithm to determine how many classrooms you should have based on your student enrollment at different grades and that'll tell you how many unhoused students you have in your school district. And I think that would be a good number because of that class size I showed you earlier, you know, with all those grades being more than fifteen, fifteen percent, some of them twenty percent over the state average, that's going to show, you're going to have, that unhoused student number is going to be high. It's not going to get you any more money from the state. What it will do, I think, is help advertise interreferential.
Do you have data from the other schools, like the look-alike schools, that they're above class size like we are?
Yeah, you want me to go to that slide?
Sure.
Go backwards.
I queued you up.
Now, got to think about where I put this. Okay, so here's your, I don't know if this is the one you're referring to, here's the geographic peers. It's better in a list form. And then the look-alike, see, there was only five of those. Because that criteria is so precise. See, with look-alike, it has to be unit enrollment between two and five thousand, a per pupil expenditure between fifty-five hundred and seventy-five hundred and a low income of ten to thirty percent. But these are very similar school districts to your district.
Do you know what their class sizes are, Dr. Volz?
No, I didn't do that. That'd be a good thing to do.
Well, if they're funded close to we are and size close to we are, my guess is they're class sizes in the same ballpark as ours.
Well, no, that's the point. No, I don't think they are. Because the point is that the reason we can't get smaller class sizes is we don't have space to put them.
Well, it's ours. Dunlap is twenty-two point four. We start with the elementary school report card.
What's ours?
That's, that's high school.
Okay. Uh, I don't know.
Well, it depends how much.
Well, it was from Dunlap, right? Sorry, next one.
Yeah, Dunlap, their numbers and Highland, their numbers are pretty close to ours. I bet their class size is, Triads, Triads got significantly more money to work with than we do.
Yeah, and the tax rate doesn't tell the whole story. So like Dunlap has considerable amount of retail and commerce.
That's true, they do.
Assess valuation, way more than you have. See, that whole northeast side of Peoria, that Dunlap district comes way into Peoria. It's kind of like what I had in Ball Chatham. We went way into Springfield, you know, up to the mall in Springfield. So, and so we had a lot of commercial and retail assess valuation, whereas, you know, other districts, your district doesn't have that, but you're pretty much, your majority, your assess valuation is housing and then probably farmland a second, I would think. So the tax rate doesn't tell the whole story. It's the average spending per pupil and I don't have that graph. That would tell you a better indication.
Yeah.
I think Dunlap's class sizes are considerable, are, would be considerably less than yours. I would guess all these districts have a lower class size than you do.
For the record, I prefer to look at average income per kid, not average spending per kid, because, you know, there's some folks that think we have income that we don't spend, which really isn't true. If you don't have as much income per student, you're not going to have as much expense per student, unless you're consistently running a red.
How do you define income? Parent income?
Revenue, we look at state funding, federal funding and local funding.
So you're talking about revenue per student? Well, that is fixed into the formula.
Now, to be honest.
I mean, that's why you're a tier, the reason you're a tier-one district is you don't have a lot of assess valuation per student. So that's why you're a tier-one district.
You know, what you'll see is the revenue per student and the expense per student numbers, I mean, they follow the same pattern, right?
Yes.
Not many districts are sitting here just banking money to bank money.
Well, those last three years, with the COVID money, yeah, that's not true in the last three years.
Okay, one other, do you have any other highlights as far as the community survey piece, like, we know facilities was number one. Anything else that you think we should think about?
Yeah, let me go back to that and when you look at the real, the comments or the, yeah, I really like to look at the comments more than I do the first or the forced answer survey, but see, if you look at these percents, so the question was, I believe this could be the area most needing to be improved in the school district, fifty-three percent of the comments were facilities. See, and the next biggest is five percent. I mean, that's a huge gap. Okay, I believe this to be the most important issue facing the school district, sixty-one percent facilities. And then growth, which has to do with facilities, was another five percent. Finances, which has to do with facilities, is another four percent. Planning, which has to do with facilities, is another three. I mean, you could add all three of those up and it'd still be facilities. And then this last one was when we got the compliments, you know, for the teachers and the staff and the work that they're doing in the district, thirty percent were compliments, but we still had a bunch of comments on facilities and planning and financing.
Rich, in a, in kind of a normal, average situation, ballpark, what kind of percentage do you think comments would have been on facilities? If you were anywhere else than us.
It all depends on the district. So.
I know, but.
I'm working with a district now that the staff thinks they need more facilities and the public doesn't. And because the staff is looking at it from a, more from an athletic, you know, fieldhouse, diamonds, those kinds of things and the, and the public is, doesn't believe that's as important. So most surveys, it depends on the district, but most surveys don't have facilities as the highest.
Correct.
And it's based on, you know, what's going on in the, in the school district.
Other questions?
I mean, you all know that facilities is the issue. I mean, we knew that going in and this, this survey just pointed out even more and then the work of this core strategic planning team also just highlights it even more.
I do think it's important though, that I know that bullying is, you know, fifty-three percent compared to five percent, but it is one of the top three in pretty much every section. Not saying that bigger space or bigger facilities will help decrease bullying, but I do think it will help play a role, I mean, getting space and, you know, area to actually breathe. Not only that, but you know, when you think about class sizes and being in a class of twenty-one where your teachers can really connect with you and you can have a space where you're connecting with twenty other kids and learning how to interact and how to collaborate. For twenty-eight, that's a big difference.
Rich, your four and five percent numbers on bullying, you know, nobody wants any bullying, right?
I mean, there's.
How does, how does four and five percent stack up around them?
Bullying doesn't usually get mentioned in surveys.
Okay. What, okay, let me ask you this, what usually gets mentioned in surveys that clearly is not getting mentioned in ours? Is there anything we can learn from that?
Finances is big.
Okay.
Academic, academic scores, academic opportunities, that's big. Safety has been a huge component the last couple of years, as has technology and a variety of things with technology going from, you know, protect from cyber.
Cyberbullying.
Yeah, cyber deception in the school district, all the way to some school districts banning all technology from use in the classrooms because of parental and staff input. So it's all over the place. Phones, you know, the student use of phones is a huge, huge issue in almost every district.
What defines miscellaneous?
Oh, we just, they, they were just like one comment on something, you know, that didn't have, and then there was never anybody else that made a comment about that.
Okay.
It's kind of tough to, we have to put these in kind of categories and then get within the category and look at them too. But we try to take the top, like if a person writes a paragraph, we try to take the first one they talk about and that's the one we count. Here are the, the responses on the Likert scale. So ninety-one percent agree or strongly agree that the district promotes use of technology for learning. Eighty-seven percent agree or strongly agree that the district is committed to providing a comprehensive and high-quality education for all students. I mean, these are very high scores compared to other school districts. Eighty percent agree or strongly agree that district has high academic standards. Eighty-six percent agree or strongly agree that school district provides a high-quality education system given the resources that are available. Eighty-three percent of the respondents agree or strongly agree that school district hires excellent employees. I mean, those are all great numbers. And that's why, you know, one of my, you know, highlights is the compliments of the public and the community for the school district. And remember, seventy-seven percent of these people are parents who are answering this way. And then we had to do strongly disagree and, strongly disagree and disagree. And, yeah, this isn't even the right slide, more luck about it, but it was, it was. But it was, it was, just because we had to do it, didn't even make sense. I mean, there really wasn't any strongly disagree, uh, or agree or disagree, or strongly disagree on any of the forced choice Likert questions we asked. I mean, basically, everybody was positive on, on the Likert type questions.
I think what this helped show me is that the reality is that our community understands that we need new facilities. And now we're to the point where that means, what does that look like for us as a community? It's not, like, I'm just thankful to hear, when you said there was a district that the staff felt like we needed new facilities in the district, or the community really didn't. You know, I, I have heard a couple of people say, well, I don't understand, I don't think we need a new junior high, I don't think we need any, any new buildings. We just need to make do with what we have. I have heard that a couple of times, so it makes me feel good that that's not, that I'm not imagining that we actually do have a consensus from the community that we need some more spaces. So, to me, that was helpful, to know that we're not up in my field.
Yeah, I feel like we all have our same goal.
Yes.
It's just how we're going to achieve that goal.
Correct.
It's why we're still.
Yep.
Get ironed out.
Yep.
Well, I think this, uh, the, the information I gave you on the class size is extremely important. And that I would be using that. And using that information along with the information on where your tax rate really is compared to Champagne County, compared to, uh, peer districts, compared to look-alike districts. And using that information as well as how far below the adequacy target you, you are.
Also points, problem with the junior highs not going to get any better.
Right, you look at what's coming down the pipe.
All right, any last minute questions for Dr. Vols, or Dr. Vols is ready, and you feel, you've helped to share?
One last.
Go ahead.
Joey, do you have this information that he has?
Dr. Vols, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks for all you guys are doing for your, the students of your school district.
Thank you.
We're on a really good path, I think, with living the strategic plan.
Yeah.
With Dr. Lee working with, and his staff working with Dr. White, and I think he can be really pleased with that information.
That was a really good segue there.
Well, you've been a big help to us, and we appreciate that.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I stay involved in the Living the Strategic Plan as well.
Good. All right, any more questions for Dr. Vols before we tell him? I mean, not that you're not enjoying your evening, I, it's very fun.
Well, I've enjoyed working with you guys, you do, you do fantastic work, and the core strategic planning team was one of the best I've ever worked with.
They were excellent, yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Vols.
Okay.
Have a good night.
Hi, everybody.
All right, any more questions before we move on? Some good, good data, good details in there. All right, so now let's jump to living the strategic plan. So, we heard all about it last time. We started talking through what it might look like to prioritize some of those goals, particularly with facilities. Uh, Dr. Lee and I were able to jump on a call with Dr. White, part of Education Leadership Solutions, and kind of think through what it might look like to fast-track the facilities piece. Do you want to speak more to that? Basically, we're, we're good to go if we want to fast-track.
Yes, um, so what Dr. White can do with regard to that is, is that uh, with all six components of the Living the Strategic Plan piece, it involves onsite visits. Goal leaders getting involved, looking at goal leader teams, taking a look at data, what indicators we want to do. And he works through all that with us, so that essentially will come back to you. And we'll give you updates, obviously, but the final Living the Strategic Plan would probably be right around the May marker with that. They had mentioned that it's a three-month process. Generally, he likes to give assignments, meet in January, meet in February, give assignments at the February meeting, come back in April, and finalize it for May. If we want to fast-track the facilities piece of that, then what we'll just need to do is work with him to backward plan from August. Because, uh, the question, if we were going to go to a referendum in November, we'd need to be approved in August. So we'll backward plan that out based on, um, the election guidelines. So then we would just, just run a parallel to begin looking at data, then the first of January with him.
Precaution he had was the same kind of thing we talked about last time, which is, a lot of those goals are interwoven. And so it's hard to fast-track facilities if you're not also going to be thinking a lot about safety or finances. So, um, you know, when we talked to him, he said, as long as you're aware that you can't do facilities in isolation, we can absolutely get things, get things rolling, um, just to make sure that we've got a question.
And then I would either on fast-tracking more of a plan, and that's what we need to do, I don't think. I mean, I don't know where the rest of the board is at, I, I would like to bet on the ballot in April, I understand why we're not. But I think it's fair, we had November.
Do we plan on having ongoing discussion, either in study session or regular meetings? Just so we can hear back on what your meetings have been like and give our feedback, and give our specific input on what we'd like to see as it relates, especially to facilities.
Yeah, we can absolutely do, and, and, I mean, I mean, that's not really, that's more you and our group leads.
And then obviously, there's going to have to be a community engagement piece.
Correct, right, right. So, the way it would play out would be, um, get that team together, jump in if I'm explaining this wrong. Get that team together, look at what the goal is, and highlight some action steps. In looking at those action steps, one of those action steps is going to be to engage the community in a facilities plan, where their voices can be heard, and that, that, those ideas can be shared. Ultimately, as a board, we will be the ones voting on what the question would be on the referendum. It, it really is going to come down to having those conversations at the community level. I imagine we intend those.
Sure.
Who would be on the team? Not asking for specific names, but generally, like, we're looking for community members, staff, board members.
My thought would be, would be that it would, first of all, I'm, I'm big on volunteerism, right? So I think that you put it out to the, the community.
Okay.
And then you would, you would try to get a, a very good smattering of, of the demographics of the, of the community.
Similar to what we did with the.
As far as, as far as the goal leader for, with, with, with our staffing in the unit office um, being as such, normally, you know, generally, one person has a goal. But, but I'll probably have three, three different goals.
Okay.
Be the goal leader.
Facilities being one of them.
Facility, I, in my mind, it's, it'd be facilities, communication, and safety.
Okay, very good. Okay, and yeah, sounds like we'd have regular meetings with that team then, and that's where like, the, the bones of, or the beginnings of a specific plan would
Yeah.
Come together.
You've got to really go out of your way to make sure that you've got a, a very good reflection of the demographics and, and thought process behind what we've supported within the community.
I think a key, you mentioned communication being one of those. Obviously, that's going to go into the end.
Absolutely.
Got those two together, and education.
Safety, communicating, the education.
Safety.
Yeah.
I was talking with Justin about his experience. I think all of that can be wrapped in, so I'm glad to hear that.
Are you talking about safety? Do you want to share about your experience?
Sure. Well, I can.
Well, just, just to give a highlight, Justin went to a really powerful school safety session. Goes beyond just Alistair Ellison, goes beyond lockdowns into actually thinking about making sure that kids are safe in every sense of the word. Should we have some catastrophe in our community? Getting to that point with, with our schools, I mean, we're not there right now. Not that we can't necessarily get there, but that is going to be a piece of this, this.
True.
Did they talk at all about like some type of curriculum or something where kids know, like, what to recognize in their friends, or if they hear things, red flags to tell somebody?
Not in this training. This was, this was more specific than I thought it was. geared towards like a certain, like, worst-case scenario.
Catastrophic event, that's you, okay.
So, I do have a meeting with Dr. Lee later this week to fill him in on everything I learned. And then get him up to speed on it, and then keep moving forward with it, so.
I guess I'm kind of, I'm envisioning, uh, kind of progress reports as those teams meet, especially facilities. So that we, as a board, can understand how we arrived at whatever final solution will be. And, you know, we're not just hearing about it in August, and it's time to develop a question, yeah. Like, yeah, like, like we did with, uh, the listening tour, and yeah, we have standing item. Okay.
I just want to be cautious to not drive the facilities plan here. I want to hear what the community says.
Right.
Then go from there.
Understood, yeah.
But the, but the regular updates, I think, is crucial. Thoughts or ideas on any of that?
I have some thoughts, I just don't know, I want to.
Share them.
I, just, just what Jeff said about communication, like, uh, having gone through the Bulldog Blueprint and some of the same statistics, like, we heard that. And when I heard that during Bulldog Blueprint, it elicited emotion in me. And it wasn't necessarily like, yes, I want to do this.
Say what specific, uh, what you heard that, that it was.
He talked about like the tax rate?
Yeah.
Statistics can be manipulated to give you anything that you want.
Well, the tax rate is not.
I understand, but the, the, the context of that, within that ranking.
Oh, sure.
Or the, um, nine out of thirteen or whatever.
Where we are.
Well, there, there's a lot more that goes into that, the, the makeup of the median house price. So we may have a lower rate, but the actual tax that I pay or community members pay is a high number. And that's what people feel that in number, more than they feel that four-point-five-oh-eight percent. And so like how that's communicated matters.
Yeah.
It does, and, and the other pieces, you're right, we have a higher average home value because we have more, a, a higher concentration of newer construction. I mean, that's.
And because we have outstanding schools.
Yeah.
So, and I'm not disagree, I'm not disagreeing with that, but it's, it's about how that message is presented. I think it just has to be very carefully thought.
So the piece comes to dollars available to spend per student. Right, because even though Thornwood's a big, nice subdivision that pays a lot of tax dollars, you know, there's a much higher percentage of students to educate in those homes than there is, say, in a comparable Southwest Champagne. Right, I don't, I can't give you the number off the top of my head.
Can you keep going with your thought there, because, I mean, there, there's, it's just rambling at this point, but like, um, you know, like, you look at some of these other districts too, and it's like, okay, well, they're funding that this much, well, uh, as you mentioned, like Dunlap has that cut of Peoria.
Right.
So like, it's just conveying how we, yeah, how we got to where we're at, or like, the real reasons why our funding is, it's just, we talked about like explaining the funding process, like, we need like a school finance one-on-one, but like, we need to get that out to people, because a lot of people that maybe voted or were against this, maybe they were against it for the wrong reason. And if you give them all of the information and let them actually decide, versus like, this is what we want you to hear. Because I saw right through that, right through that when I viewed it. And I was like, oh, okay, I get it, you don't, I, my thought at the time was, you don't really want my input, here's what we're going to do. And then I'm trying to steer you into that. So I like the way that we're going about it, just saying that we need to communicate that to the community effectively.
I love the fact that you have been so transparent about all of this from the time you joined the board. Like, to be that vulnerable in this space is, is huge to me, so thank you for that. What would have opened your eyes to say, yes, I absolutely support that? Because, because what you just said is, is the fact of the matter, that it comes down to dollars, dollars and cents. And when somebody looks at what they are paying in taxes, we can say we have a low tax rate, which we do. That doesn't mean we don't have taxes, we pay a lot in taxes. I mean, getting something out of it, yes. Are, are future generations going to get something out of it? Yes. That's not enough for some people, it's not enough to say, we're doing this for the kids, we're doing this to benefit our, our schools and our, our future generations. It comes down to how much money it's going to cost, so what, what would it cost?
I don't know if I can answer that tonight.
Can you just think about?
But just, just been thinking of it, like, I just talked to so many people that were, you know, like, uh, this is before inflation, and it's really hard. The things are already so expensive, we're already living, um, you know, on a budget. Now we're going to add this, yes, we need it, but I don't know where that's going to come from.
Yes.
I heard that a lot from people. Um, and that's real, so yeah, there's going to be sacrifices, but, um, yeah, I don't know. It's just how, how we can elicit that emotion that makes people feel that, yes, I see the value in this, and yes, like, we do need this. And I am going to help be a part of that.
I think it's important for all of us to think about that. How, how can we, how can we best convey that this money, what, were we at, what, were we at a session? No, it was our core strategic team.
It was Ryan Remmely.
Yeah, thank you, it was Ryan Remmely.
Transactional versus transformative.
Thank you, I had that written down. He talked about how we need to shift from a transactional mindset to a transformational mindset. That this is not, that, you know, paying taxes is not transactional, it's transformative for our kids, and our schools, and our, our, our families, and future generations.
So I, dealing with what I do on a daily basis, that doesn't change Mrs. Smith's social security check.
Right.
Doesn't change her withdrawal rate from her retirement account. Helps her net worth, but she's not going to realize that. And I think, we, is it an investment? Yes, it's an investment, you are going to see that appreciation and value in your home. But to, to Kyle's point, cash flow is king, and
Yeah.
So I think we need to be, we need to communicate incredibly clearly and transparently. And a, a lot of that is not like our doing. So you, like, one of the slides I remember seeing was, from this point in time till this point, we didn't know as a district, we made no improvements. Like, we weren't doing whatever the upkeeps were, and I don't know when that started and when that ended, so I'm not like pointing any fingers. But I thought, how, how could that be? Like, how could we let ourselves get to that point? Well, it doesn't matter now, because we're here. And you always hear people say, well, they did this with this building, and they did that. Again, that's not our board that did that.
But, but we're living.
But we're, but we're, we're trying to, we're trying to overcome that and build that trust up. So I'm just saying, those are the things that I.
Yep.
What, this is me just thinking outside the box, so bear with me. I mean, is there any way that we can kind of try to offset?
Yes.
A little bit, like?
Those conversations are happening.
Like with, like in, like the enrollment fees, athletic fees, those type of things, driver's ed fees, school parking, I mean, I'm just thinking, I know there's a lot more other fees, but try to like lower those. I don't know, offset the higher, the high tax.
I feel like we had a conversation around that at one point. Um, and we looked at how that would impact the revenue. And it would not, I don't know, well, to do, like, even if we did like a one-year freeze. Um, I can't remember all the details of it, but I remember.
There's a lot, a lot of families here have multiple kids. And it's a lot come August, you know, or September, and I don't know, it just, yeah. I'm just trying to think, like, it might make me think, okay, well, at least I'll have to pay this amount for it.
I mean, it'd be great if we could get a few more Dr. Donuts, and
Yeah.
You know, maybe a.
Those are, those are great, because we're going to need to have that down the road. But it's until that, uh, Tiff district ends, that's a, I don't even know all the, it's an answer that, but we have that gap till that comes, so.
Well, we're still giving
Not completely.
Money, well, we can talk more about Tiff.
Yeah.
But that's a great.
We're, we're going to do that.
Um, but going back to what you were saying, I thought you were. Um, but going back to what you were saying, I thought you were gonna say, can we offset some of the, the funding that we might leave? For additional things beyond, um, just buildings. So like, one of the things that I heard that, you, you kind of hear it from different pockets of people. But just facilities as far as athletics or extracurriculars are not as high of a priority as classroom spaces. But people who are prioritizing these athletic facilities, how can we maybe make that happen without asking our taxpayers to? Increase their taxes for that and instead just focus on the most needed.
You know, back when I came on the board, that was, that was really strongly held belief by the board that we needed to watch fees carefully. And there were lots of times fees were hacked back then, particularly for larger families to help larger.
They, they still are, like, I thought it.
They still are, I think, I think that was good, I think it was helpful. Uh, but I also tell you, that was also the time period where we weren't fixing things, we didn't have any money. And, you know, the reason things, the reason some of that maintenance stuff fell behind wasn't because, well, but this is cool, let's just let it fall behind. Because we wanted money, so. Or decisions to spend money elsewhere.
Right.
You know, put money in staff.
Not to get too far off track, but may, maybe I can get some more information about what you're talking about with the. I think, because you did hear that a lot, like.
Yeah.
We, we don't need turf for field, we need classroom sizes. So if you're able to target that money, that might elicit a more positive response.
Yeah.
So I'm envisioning like the, like the, I don't know, I fund or something for U of I where it's like, hey. I've got some money that I would like to invest in this program just for this, you don't have to, but I want to. And then we can put that to use, I think it's a great idea.
But I.
Or, and you could do that for band or, or.
Multiple things, and that was one of the things when we were in our core strategic team conversations at our finance table, we were talking about. You know, we are really, really limited in what we can do with a school budget. But could we charge the finance team to look for alternative sources of revenue that don't impact the tax, tax rate? Um, so that was one thing that we would really like to see happen because then those finance pieces come back and then you can do more with facilities. So anyway, yeah, I, I, I think we're.
There's, there's probably opportunities to do some of that, and I think we should look at it. I think we need to remain real conscious of the fact that. Um, a lot of our organizations did a high level of funding right now from. Parent groups, rich clubs, whatever. There's a lot of that already going on. And I, I think when we get in our discussion, we don't wanna overlook that or downplay that because what, that one is very significant. To a lot of our programs, but are there some other things we could probably do? Probably are.
And I think it al- also, you know, when we looked at all of our donations that we got last month. The amount of money that comes in in the form of donations and even the amount of money that doesn't cross our board table and, and the amount of donations from families. Almost kind of masks how limited our school funding is. Because if you go into a weigh room that just had a ten thousand dollar donation given, given to it, it's really hard to see who this school district needs increased taxes.
Yeah.
But if you don't know that that was a privately donated. Yeah, that's, that's a big deal.
Very good. And, and, we're thankful that you, all those.
Politically, yeah.
Good thing, anything from everything, drama to music to sports programs, I mean, they've all been.
Incredible.
Funded at a terrific level by parents, but to your point, it makes it harder to say, oh, yeah, we're.
Right.
And we're, we're scraping the.
Get by.
Get by. With students.
Thing we have to think about is, what's the cost if you don't do it? And, you know, I, I love the term slowly then suddenly. Companies will bankrupt slowly then suddenly, communities change slowly then suddenly. And I think the cost if we don't do something is real insignificant.
You could look at the cost of not doing the previous referendum, the cost of a pass.
Oh, my gosh, oh, my gosh.
You know, so.
Just the difference tomorrow. Did the difference in the buying power from the June twenty eighth ref- failed referendum to the November was significant.
Yeah.
Yep.
I wrote that down, that's good.
Yeah, Andrew Newey, former CEO of Pepsi. Uh, if you ever wanna read a great book, go read about her, incredible CEO of transformed PepsiCo.
I'm a Coke fan personally.
Uh, you ate PepsiCo's next tonight.
No.
You know, there's not a good answer to your. Uh, the communication piece, I think, is, is very critical. One thing that we learned, in spite of what we felt were some really good efforts to try to educate the community, our community is not very well educated.
And I feel like that's on us.
Yeah, that's on us, it is on us and, and. I, I, I think we made some efforts, we thought we were doing some things, but as we look back on it now and. As we run surveys now and we have the information we have now, we haven't done a good job at all. And I think, and I'm glad that one of the, of the goals that we talked about for the strategic planning and communication. And I think we need to look at, at consistency and, and, and messaging. How we're gonna get that out and I think that's key in the core of here and what comes back from that.
Continuing to engage the community. I think that's huge too.
And listening.
To, to, to involve them through the process.
It, it's shocking how much information that I think we feel we have sent out and dispersed over the last five years. Compared to when you survey people, what's really connected.
All right, so to circle back around to your initial question, Jordan, we will bring information back as it's happening, but as board members, we can attend those sessions, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Our real hand moving in the air. That was, and I'm glad that you.
I can just read his body language.
Anything else?
Tax the cookie companies at the high school could bring us.
I'm referring to that.
Yeah. Establish our own taxes, yeah.
You know, they donate those.
Well, and what, but it's, and I'm sure they're worthy organizations.
Oh, that's funny. Okay. Um, let's jump into superintendent evaluation process, so. Um, I asked Kenny to put this on the agenda just because we're getting to the point in the year where this is typically, uh, we start having conversations around it. I feel strongly that because we're a fairly new board, um, it would be beneficial for us to talk about what that process looks like. To evaluate a superintendent, what it might, what Kenny might prefer as far as his own professional development in that process. Um, and how it might tie into the strategic planning process that we just kind of wrapped up, how can we tie in evaluation? And then those goals within the plan. Um, you've gotten a chance, I'm hoping, to look over, I shared, uh, just that superintendent evaluation process document. Just to give you some oversight of like, this is just to know how this works. Um, you know, in the board, we employ one person as the superintendent. Um, so we need to evaluate him and determine how he's doing. There are a lot of options when it comes to templates or forms or how do you want it to align to this or this or this, you can align it to. The Association of Superintendents and get their goal, you can align it to your stra- strategic plan, you can use something you've always used. So what I was hoping was that we might be able to have, I, I mean, if you guys are just like, hey, this, this form that we got in our bracket looks good, let's just use that. I'm fine with that. I just wanna be able to have a conversation as we go into it, so you all know kind of what this process is gonna look like. And what our role is as board members, um, in shaping kind of how the next year academic year goes as well as how Kenny develops as a leader.
That's some overall thoughts, uh, one. I would say that the mission and the values and the vision and goals need to be tied somewhere. There's, we need to give Kenny a scoreboard to say, how can we tell if you're winning? How can we tell if we're achieving the right objectives that, that we set forward? And those all, there needs to be a string tied to all of that.
You mean like measurable?
Yes, yeah, I mean, he, there, for his own good.
Right, yes.
He needs to see that and we need to be able to quantify that with him. Um. One of the things that I think is most important to any leader is feedback and I didn't see much of that in there. Um, through discussion with the board, it first, it sounds like that's not something that takes place in public education and.
Clarify what you mean by feedback, because feedback from us will take place.
Sure.
But say more about what you're saying.
Another one liner, you can write this down.
Okay, I get it.
Inspect what you expect.
Oh, I already, I already know.
We need to make sure that the objectives, the expectations that we give Kenny are being fulfilled. And feedback is a gift, we all need that in our own professional development. We owe, I would think Kenny would want that from his peers. Um, not with the intent of creating conflict, but creating transparency. And for him to see, hey, what are blind spots that he may have? Um, we all have blind spots. To help him improve as a leader and to help him improve in leading our district. That's where I see feedback coming in. And if he goes to his support and say, hey, give me some feedback, I'm guessing they're probably not gonna be the most forthcoming. Um, because he is their leader, he's responsible for them.
Right.
And, but to create a feedback loop with the intent of creating a better environment, not that there's issues. But to create development opportunities and to clear out blind spots, that's the only thing that I saw was missing. I do think the, the version that we use needs to be updated and aligned. Um. To more with what we're trying to do today, then evidently this is a formula we've used for some time.
Yeah, I'm not a fan of changing tools every year, it's, you know, it's a threat, but this tool is the only one I ever remember using. And I think it was put in place well before I, so it's been around a while. So I don't think if we, if we take a minute to update it, or take some time to update it, that we're jumping Willie Milligan.
Yeah.
About tools, it's probably a good time to do that. And, and just so to be clear, so I'm understanding what you're saying, you're, you're saying that there ought to be some loop. Where we solicit some feedback from Kenny's direct reporters.
Correct.
And can I, I'm sorry, I was gonna clarify on the process, would that help? Or do you guys, yeah, clarify on, as far as the time, like, so the way it would typically work, um, and jump in if I'm, because, you know. I'm new here. So we would determine kind of what the evaluation tool is that we wanna use. Then we individually would individually complete that based on our own data or evidence that we have from what we know of Kenny. Then, as a board, we would ask Kenny to step out and we would have a closed session conversation about what we're noticing about Kenny's performance. With regard to those specific things. We would come together and have one voice based on those conversations. So it wouldn't be like Dr. Lee getting seven directions on all of those pieces. So we would have that conversation, we would come to a consensus, we would invite Dr. Lee back in and then we would have that conversation around, here's what we're noticing. Here's, you know, here are some highlights, here are some areas we'd like to see you improve, talk to us, or vice versa, talk to us about what you're experiencing. What are your highlights and we can share and have that conversation within a closed session space. Um, basically what we wanna avoid is all of us, each of us, talking at Dr. Lee and telling him, I think you need to do this, I think you need to do this. Because we do need to speak with, with one voice on behalf of.
Sure.
The whole board. Um, and then that gets filed in his personnel file. And one thing that Dr. Lee and I had talked about is possibly, once we get these goals set. Having, um, almost like informal evaluations throughout the year in order to really do check-in points. Because it's really frustrating to get to an annual evaluation and realize that you were missing the mark. Like, it should be happening kind of throughout the year. So that's something that we, we would easily, that he's.
Performance review, not a surprise.
Yes, oh, right.
That's what I do on my day to.
Sorry, Ken.
Some of that forward or whatever maybe be tied to, once we get the strategic plan in place.
Exactly, that's exactly what I'm thinking, like, give us updates on, these are our action steps, where are we on these, how are we doing, why are we missing the mark? Are we ahead of the game? Um, and having conversations with Kenny in spaces like that. So that's kind of what the process is, does that help?
Yeah.
Okay, I cut you off.
No, you answered part of the question, because you said that he's gonna be able to have a conversation with us. But if we all, like, does he get a chance to kind of, I don't like to use this word, but for like a better term, rebuttal? You know what I mean?
Yes.
Back and say.
Sure.
But, but not on the spot, because, like, you don't have to think about it, you know what I mean? Like, I'm not saying this should be negative at all, I can't think of any negative.
One idea we could do is.
Feel like, here's what, sorry, here's what I'm asking you, because I feel like if, to his point, surprises, I don't like surprises at all.
Yeah.
I don't think that's fair to anybody.
Yeah.
And if he gets surprised, well, he won't, but, like, I don't, I feel like it's, uh, not fair to have him have to respond right there, you know what I mean? Like, I want him to be able to think about, okay, well, wait, no, here's an example, well, I didn't think about that.
Could we do something where we gather our consensus, we excuse Kenny, we gather our consensus and then I sit down and have a conversation with Kenny, why are you smiling? About surprise, Kevin, have a conversation with him about, here's what we noticed, here's what our feedback is, and then at the following closed session. Have a conversation where we can talk it through and it won't necessarily be a surprise on the spot.
Yep.
Does that better? Feel better?
Back in the day, of course, we used, did something totally different for the last few years. Ask me later and I'll share that privately with you, but it was, it was very much that. We would, we would bring our comments together and then usually two board members were assigned to sit down and say, okay, here's. Here's kind of what the boards see and think of. And then we come back and. That way, that way he was like.
I think it's also a time for Kenny to highlight to us.
Oh, absolutely.
What he's been working on, how he's growing.
Cause we don't.
Tell his story.
Right.
Cause oftentimes we don't get to hear that. I think you do a great job with your weekly communication of this, but.
Yeah, that's, those are awesome.
Yes, well, those.
But there are things that, you know, right, like the everyday things.
Yeah.
And to finish up that, that feedback part, there's probably one person in this world that thinks you're perfect and that's your mother. I said probably. I think that's.
You may have found an exception.
That's my point, is feedback is a gift and it truly, that's my intent, it's, it's nothing else other than to help you grow. As a leader and to create a better space for us.
So, to piggyback on what you're saying, if we were to get some of this feedback, um, how would that look and how soon would we be able to get that?
I think it's just a component, it, it's not.
I agree, because I'm reading through this previous one, I'm like, I, I could definitely answer these with my interactions with Kenny, but I don't know. How deep some of this other stuff goes, but I wouldn't honestly know how to evaluate.
I think it also comes back to what are his competencies and what are the competencies that he's working on and tying that all together. I think it's in conjunction with the strategic plan and the measures and the goals that come from that.
When's the last time this was done? For you?
In that format? Oh, wait, well, we ha- we have an annual evaluation every year.
Okay.
Um, we did not follow this specific format last year, did we?
Well, we used that form, that form as a guide. You know, we had a discussion.
Okay, it felt a little more, um, discussion, yeah.
Yeah, it was, but so, so contractually, it says that, that we've got that completed prior to March first, now if that's something you wanna change.
The, the rationale behind the date is if we want to not renew Kenny's contract, we would have to be thoughtful about. Making sure that that's documented prior to the beginning of March, considering we.
So March is when? March is when we'll do this?
No, so I think we should probably do it before then, right? Or yes, March.
Yeah, it's March, it's prior to March. Okay, okay.
Generally now is the time that we start.
And then, I mean, to Jeff's point, I like the idea of quantifying data, making it measurable.
And then, I mean, to Jeff's point, I like the idea of quantifying data, making it measurable, easy to to understand if there's been progress, there's progress being made. Can we make those changes to this?
Yeah.
In the meantime, and then, I mean, this pamphlet talks about like ongoing performance reviews as well.
Yeah.
Is that something that we want to implement, or we find with annual?
We just talked about quarterly.
Yeah, like projects, I think it's gonna be hard to find something that's measurable, other than, I mean, generic.
Well, I mean, there's.
Just like the numbers.
Implementing those steps for the strategic plan, I think then we start action.
Yeah, and think about, remember in education when we moved to Danielson framework? I mean, it's all evidence-based, it's all evidence-based. And so when you think about, like, communication was the example, I was, Jeff and I were chatting earlier, communication was the example. And it's all based on what is the proof of your aiming towards your goal? So let's say our goal is increase communication with both families and community members, so those who don't have kids in the schools. We would say to Kenny, what evidence do you have that you're reaching this goal? And then I already know there's evidence, I know I get weekly updates from him as a board member. He sends out weekly updates after, or updates after board meetings to notify staff of what changes have happened and what got approved or what got voted down in board meetings. He took part in all of our listening sessions over the summer. He took part in, of course, your teaching team conversations. I know through his weekly memo that he's part of all of these different organizations in our community, so he's communicating there. But then we can also say, Kenny, like, what other evidence do you have? And then we look at that data and say, yeah, you're on the right track with this, or you're on the right track with families, but we need to do more with community members, not. And.
I guess I'm just looking at like, you know, three out of five, that means he's on target.
Ah, I get you.
On target, or, you know what I mean? I I think that's just because that's what I'm used to in my job. So I I'm not at all on target, I'm just, that was just something I.
I think, yeah, that's great, right, go ahead.
We also hear to serve Kenny.
Yeah.
And what does he need from us?
Right.
I think that also needs to be part of the process, like, what is he not getting from us?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So here, here's what I'm hearing, let me just see if I'm I'm getting a enough voice. We like the idea of the quarterly reviews, check-ins, we're probably based around the goals of the actions. We like the idea of changing up maybe this form to kind of pull in some of those goals. One question I have for you, obviously, Dr. Lee has a plethora of tools that you could potentially use. Is there one in mind that potentially could pull in some of those strategic angles that you could, that you would be willing to share with us as a?
In my mind, we would, we could just, like, for instance, on this, where it says number three, personal characteristics, we just want a strategic goal, why wouldn't we just have six topics, and then they align with the six goals of the strategic plan, and then the core, you know, the, our, what we, our value statements would be the indicators underneath each one. Mentioned the thought, but then that also, then that takes out, I mean, maybe personal characteristics is is important. So.
So I I think one thing we want to make sure of is that on that like a child on a grandma trying lunch. Not a big old knee to the staff who work in the schools.
Good.
So does that, would that come under personal characteristics? I'm looking at this for a minute.
I think it comes under ethics and profession.
What, is that other?
Uh, it is on page twenty-three.
So we're, we're looking at the.
I was looking at the actual form, I'm sorry.
Uh, you you were looking at the standard.
I see what you're looking at. Sorry, Joe.
Uh, that is under personal characteristics, anti-sanitization, it's the integrity of personal.
I think under leadership, a little bit motivates to have to do their best.
I like, I like keeping that. Personal characteristics.
May, so maybe we add a section to ask through the strategic plan.
Okay.
Because I felt, I felt like of some of these that I could answer, I feel like I could really give a good answer, like, that was one of them.
Yeah.
I feel like I could really give good input on that.
Well, that's a good point, a lot of these are things that we're, that we're gonna do. Strategic plan ones are kind of more like a wire, right?
Right, right.
I mean, we don't, we don't need to survey the board members on that one, we just need to serve.
Right.
The reality of the situation. What about, and I'm just throwing this out for discussion, not because I'm necessarily pro communism. Jeff's thought about soliciting some feedback from direct reports. That's a real private sector thing to do. And so it's those of us that live and operate.
All right.
And it's not so much a public sector thing to do. But is there merit to that, how, what is that?
Yeah, the process to do it, um, obviously, not as confidential, respectful, um, I would.
And frankly, I'm sorry, I just thought of this, it could, it could even be advisory, I mean, wouldn't you necessarily have to be a rated part of either, go ahead, something.
I would be interested in, please take all this. And as a superintendent, yes, not being done to you, but for you. And again, I know I've lived in the private sector world my entire life, but I, I think of it as developing as a leader, how I've developed and grown from feedback, and I would want the same thing for you. What's your reaction to it?
I'm open to it. I think what we need to do is be intentional about what what we're asking.
Yep.
Um, and then I think it needs to be fluid if the, in the event that the cast of characters changes in various avenues, in various realms of the school set.
I think that's like tied to the vision. And time, purpose, I think is, is where that connection can be made. And living out the strategic plan. For right now, hey, how is Kenny executing on this from your point?
You know, and something else you could potentially learn is, let's say, I don't know, let's say there's six direct reports we're getting. And and five people all say this, well, one person's over here on an island.
Yeah.
Okay, so then that tells us, and you, and and you may already know by then, you know, there's a problem, you and that person. Okay, well, what's, what is the problem? That person have a.
I would be more interested in the themes, I wouldn't be interested in the one-off way.
No, I know, but that could help him.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah, it could be, it absolutely could, like, he may not be aware of.
He's got a bad relationship, you don't have a relationship with the person you would prefer to have. I don't know, it could be vindicated or something else, who knows?
Do you know what other districts do? It's very unusual for, from what I understand, it's very unusual for principals to evaluate superintendents. And like, you know, what we were talking earlier, I've never been asked, like, I've been asked to give feedback to my principal, but that has never been part of her evaluation. And I imagine, this is for bad, that our principals give feedback on our superintendent, but it's not part of the evaluation process.
Well, that's another one.
So.
As a principal, though, I volunteered one time from what was called the VALED, which was the Vanderbilt three hundred and sixty degree evaluation for everybody.
I mean, I think that the only caution I have, Kenny kind of alluded to it. Now, we are all, I feel, this is my perception, we are all in a very trustworthy and trusting space. I trust each of you at this table, I trust Kenny, I feel that Kenny trusts me, I feel that Kenny trusts us as a board. I feel that our principals trust us, that we are here to support them, I feel that we support, that we trust our principals to do what's best for our students. We're in a really great space right now. If any of those pieces shift, it could turn into a really tricky situation. So while I think feedback is essential, especially for professional growth, I wonder about the idea of having it, but not tying it directly to the evaluation. Does that, does that make sense?
I think just, it's it's part of it, it's not the evaluation, but it's part of the evaluation. And I think part of you continue to create that trust environment, feedback's part of it, be being able to give feedback is part of creating trust and, you know, a climate that's empowering.
Yeah, I don't know that you'd even want to score it necessarily, I think it's just a piece of.
Yeah. But if there's, if there's consistencies, I I also think that that's important as well. And it's also a place that we might be able to say, hey, you've got a great talent here. How can we continue to leverage that? And that's, that's my perspective.
Now, I've kind of followed your role, I'm gonna follow somebody's role. Let's say there's somebody that just decides that Kenny is on the side of now, like, you know. And so they all of a sudden, all of a sudden, they're, they're, they're gonna take their voice as part of this process and torpedo it.
I think it's just the same as somebody that thinks Kenny is perfect, it's just part of it, it's one person, but what are the themes in it? What are, what are Kenny's themes, what's Kenny's story? If if we have said, hey, this is a competency you need to work on, and three years later, he has it and it's still showing up, I think that's a point in discussion that we could have, say, hey, we've talked about this for three years, how are you developing and growing through that? On good, in good years or bad years? But I, I just, in life, you're gonna have people like you're talking about, that's part of life. And, okay, so there's one upset person, might be his mom.
What if it's my, what if it's Max McHome's favorite principal?
Then I'm gonna, I would ask.
That's on you, that's a lack of character and a lack of that.
I would.
Wait a minute, my favorite principal thinks he's all screwed up.
Gosh, if that's.
But how would you know it was your favorite principal? I don't know, because I have a favorite, I'm all for it. But I'm just being.
But how would you know if it's not?
No, you wouldn't know, I guess, with that.
So, so I think, I think like, you don't wanna ask them to evaluate Kenny, you wanna ask them, help us understand more what he does, like, because we're, we're lack, we, that's our blind spot. Because we don't have those interactions day to day, so like, we don't, we don't need them, like, to do our job, we just help fill in some of those pieces that we need. Like, we're just gonna use that for our own purposes, we're not tying this to Kenny's evaluation, but it just helps give us insight what we're doing.
So so talk a little more about what it might look like as far as, as far as getting that feedback, would it be something where, well, multiple, like, the, the, would it be a form, would it be something similar to this, would it be just a narrative, would it come to all of us, would it come to all of us, including Kenny? Would it come to one person to identify the themes and then share those out, and then we share the themes with Kenny? So talk, talk through a little more.
What, how it works in my job now, with with my manager, is it's a survey, it's an anonymous survey, and there's a list of ten questions, and you rank it, I think it's zero to ten, uh, one to ten.
Rated or rated?
Rated, rated, one to ten. I feel Dr. Lee is effective in delivering, I don't know, you know, you, you zero, or one to ten, and you put it on there, and then they take everybody's responses and spit it out to whatever it is, so they'll get like a average six on this one, average four on this one. Uh, but it's anonymous. And I, I like that, you know, because I'm, I'm, wouldn't necessarily go to my manager and say, hey, I really don't like it when you do this.
Yeah.
But I could maybe score, you know, like a five.
Yeah.
Instead of a six. And I think what would help me is on the, on this form, is if Kenny would, Dr. Lee would, you know, for like number one relationships, measure for effect, his effectiveness in working with the board and community. And then there's a list of five, you know, sub, sub-goals, have him give us examples of each one. To your point, uh, because I don't know what he does, day in and day out, I think I do. And then community relations, there's five, have him give us examples.
Does he evaluate himself?
Generally, right? Don't you do a self-evaluation, self-reflection, don't you do a self-reflection?
Yeah, we didn't here last year, no.
We got, we got one year here.
I haven't, and we filed a very unique plan.
Yeah.
If we had a survey of ten question, or the ten questions rated, as Becky mentioned, we could have you fill that out, and like, maybe just we could receive that, talk amongst ourselves about it as part of that process, like.
Yeah, because if you fill out your form, person give it to us.
And 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 then we could use that in our discussion, it doesn't necessarily have to be shared with Dr. Lee.
Is there a favor of those folks to submit it to us directly to the board?
I, I would imagine.
Yeah, wait a minute.
Because I love the confidentiality of it, and anon, you know, those folks may, being anonymous, I think, is important.
Yeah.
So who would you, would include your building principals?
I would like to see the four building principals and the central office staff, so Bagby, Murro, and.
Yeah.
Maybe Joe.
And I don't, I don't think we need to publish that or whatever, it's just to help, help me fill out this out and give an accurate evaluation.
I guess, I'm, I'm sorry, Kenny. What are you gonna say?
Yeah, I was just gonna say that, you know, do you remember when we had the conversation about the CEO from Netflix? So I set up a
Yeah.
negative feedback only from the principals and tried that, um, and told them that I wanted a Google sheet that was anonymous. And and their response was, we're gonna sit down and have a conversation face to face. So I don't, I I'm assuming they'll be fine with anonymous, but that was their response.
Awesome. Yeah, that's, that, that's special, I feel like that's unique.
That's special.
Yeah.
So I guess I walked in with the assumption, which I shouldn't have done, that you would fill out a self-reflection on the same kind of document that we would be using. Okay.
I think that that would be.
Like, that would be.
What?
I mean, I have.
The principals that I advised we'd fill out.
Okay.
Self-reflections prior to.
Okay.
Because I would be interested in, why do you feel that?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so so let's, um, I just want to make sure everybody's okay on board doing kind of an anonymous survey with our staff member, with our four principals and the central office staff, central office, the chairman. Is that the issue? Okay.
Sure.
And.
Can I ask?
They would come, yes.
Would you be open if I crafted a couple of questions that could give them a chance to voice their opinion?
Um, yeah.
There's a place for comments.
Yeah.
Well, yes, here's what I'm wondering, do we want to just use the same tool that we would be using, or do you want to use?
I think there's like, one of the questions that I love recently is, what is it like to be on the other side of me?
Okay.
And I think that's a powerful question that gets in the mind of those that are leading Kenny. And just for them to be quite transparent, um, to address blind spots, again, we've all got them. Not that you're gonna, you're not gonna fix them all, but I think you can pick up on the themes and that.
Wouldn't it be possible to, to finalize all of our questions and our forms at our next meeting? That'd be like.
Yeah, so what I'm hearing is that you wanna use this tool as a base and add a strategic plan component to it. Yeah, I could do that, that's.
And then the tool for feedback would have some open-ended questions? Do we want to have any kind of rating?
I think that's, yeah.
Yes.
I like it, I think having the feedback from them is a huge piece of the puzzle that we need to hear in our evaluation process, because we only see Kenny, Dr. Lee during meetings, and we're not with him on a day-to-day basis, so I think that's a huge part of the puzzle we need to hear. And I think if we could have some time to think about that and come to the next meeting, this.
I agree.
It worked.
Yeah, Jeff wanted to work on a draft and.
Yeah, so you actually actually, and then share those, and then we can talk more about the next meeting.
Just trying to, I, I think of just some open-ended questions like that. But I don't think it needs to be five, two, two to three, I, because Kenny also might think that he's got a weakness where it's truly his strength.
Yeah.
And I think that's also a place where, hey, maybe he is focusing on something and he's excelling at it, maybe he doesn't need to spend as, as much time there and he could focus on another opportunity.
I wanna be aware of our principal's time, for the demands on their time, so
It's two to three questions.
That would be great.
Yeah, we don't, we don't want pretty much, Ross.
Absolutely not.
But is it too much to ask, Dr. Lee, could you give examples of intersection of what you're doing? Just so I, I don't feel like I can give you an accurate four on some of this stuff.
Other thoughts, ideas? Okay, um, we do have closed session tonight, so, um, we'll do a quick break, but I need to make sure Dr. Lee, um, one and two, right?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, we do have a closed session that started at nine, four, the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance or dismissal of specific employees, and collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives, or deliberations concerning salary schedules for more or more classes of employees. Are there any other reasons we need to go into closed session? Hey, can I have a motion to go into closed session for those reasons?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and we need to move, all of us have to go to closed session. Mr.?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Severance?
Yes.
Home?
Yes.
Yes, um, we do not have any business that we anticipate doing once we come out of closed session. So we will end the YouTube feed and take a quick break and come back and change the recordings over and go into closed session.